Meeting back to order, an open session, and I welcome all of you. First item that we'll deal with is the consent agenda items.
I had the vouchers tonight, and everything looked in order. I will make a motion after a brief discussion here to approve that. I did want to make the board aware that going through the vouchers, that our attorney bill was abnormally high this month, as I've noticed in months previously. And I was wondering if we could add that to our agenda for our January meeting, Keith, and have a discussion and have Andy pull what our expenses have been this year for our lawyer bill. There was our total this month was $1,198.50, and only $73.50 of that was not for open records requests. So we've spent $1,125 this month on just open records requests alone for attorneys. So I think we need to put that on our informational items for next month, please.
Okay.
With that, I will, unless Andy or Dr. Dierfle have anything to add with that?
Nope, I don't.
Okay, so with that, then I would go ahead and move that we approve the consent agenda items for this month.
And a second?
Second.
Dale, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. Next, we'll go to community comments, and we have one. And so I'll read the guidelines for addressing the board. Welcome to this meeting, the Board of Education of the School District of Amory. We are pleased you are interested in the school district educational issues. Your input may be very beneficial to the development of appropriate educational programs. You may address the board only during the community comments time on the agenda. Amory School District residents, district employees, and guests invited by the board may address the board at the discretion of the presiding board member. In order for the meeting to flow smoothly, we would appreciate that the following guidelines to be followed by anyone wishing to address the Board of Education. For those wishing to speak before the board, a sign up sheet will be available prior to the start of the meeting. If the topic noted on the sign up sheet is deemed to be out of order, the presiding board member will inform the person wishing to speak prior to the start of the meeting. Comment time is limited to five minutes per person. However, the time limit may be increased or decreased at any time by the presiding board member. The time allocated for a community comments may also be entered by the determination of the presiding board member. Comments and suggestions related to the school district operation are welcome. Personal criticism of members of the Board of Education or employees of the district is out of order. Please stand to be recognized. After being recognized, give your name and address for the record. The board normally receives citizen input and does not respond or debate. If there is a need for an answer or response to a concern or issue, the district administrator or one of the other administrators may get back to you within the next week. If your concern requires board action, it may be placed on the agenda for a future board meeting. And I want to thank you for your cooperation. We have Stephanie Jansen, and there is no comment as to what you're going to talk about.
Stephanie Jansen, Garfield Township. In July, I had approached members of our school board and administration to specifically ask that we begin to review some of our library materials, specifically the stuff that our kids have access to, as more and more disturbing books have been discovered throughout our nation. It was explained to me that this would be a huge undertaking for the district, and even, we even offered to help with volunteer parents, and the district declined. Last month, I read an excerpt from the book Me, Earl, and the Dying Girl by Jesse Andrews at this meeting. Due to the content and nature of the book, I was understandably cut off. The district took further action in muting the recording in order to not violate YouTube standards before uploading the recorded meeting to their YouTube channel. So if the book is this disgusting and disturbing and even breaks YouTube standards, why is it available to our children? What I read was disgusting, and if the district had asked, I would have gladly given my blessing to mute it. In a private meeting following that reading, it was shared with me that the district stands behind their book choices that are in the libraries. It's alarming that there are a variety of books throughout our district highlighting self-harm, such as stapling one's own penis, self-cutting, abortions, normalizing teen drug use, drug and alcohol use, books detailing the purpose, importance, or need of eliminating one's bowels before engaging in sexy fun time between two men, with the last of these examples being available to all students pre-K through 12 in our district. Parents have filed the proper request for reconsideration on several library selections. One parent was informed that the district doesn't have the control to electronically remove specific materials such as eBooks or other specific book titles from the online library catalog. Destiny Discover, this is not correct. The district has a tool and step-by-step instructions to do so on the Destiny Discover Help page. This district is reacting to the November book reading by revising Policy 186, which allows for community comment. New provisions removing the taxpayer's ability to present concern, engage with our district, bringing light to any issues we have. This effectively drives a wedge between our community and our schools. Our district refuses to take accountability and operate with transparency. These books, part of their policy is not to be submitted through a lawyer, and they're being done so. Meanwhile, parents are wondering how these sexually explicit and harmful, harm-inflicting books ever entered their, our school district, and why the district stands behind these particular book choices. Thank you.
We will move on to our next administrative reports.
Hello, everybody.
Let's get a box.
Well, I was asked to see some things at the last meeting, so I came prepared with that. We'll get to that in a second. All right, high school stuff. As you guys are well aware, our winter sports season are in full go right now. I'm not going to go through a full recap. There's a lot of information out there on social media. I will just point out that our hockey team, boys' hockey team, is currently the number three ranked team in Division Two in the state of Wisconsin. Our wrestling team is ranked number one, and for a school our size to have two programs that highly ranked is pretty darn impressive. So sometimes I think we take those things for granted, so I just want to make sure that those are out there. And we're proud of all of our sports teams, but that's pretty darn impressive. November 29th, we had new member induction for the National Honor Society. We had our winter choir and jazz band concert last week on December 13th. We have received our results from our ninth through 11th grade practice ACT tests and are currently going through data analysis in our different PLC groups with that information. If you, just a reminder, we took those tests in November as a little step here to try to improve some of our scores. Future events, just a reminder that there's always sporting events and different things going on. I would encourage people to watch our school social media pages. We are Amory Facebook, school YouTube page, so you can watch the live streams of these. On December 21st, our choir is going to Amory Memory Care, and they're going to do some outside Christmas caroling down there, so nice little connection there. On January 10th, we have our high school honors band will be performing, or we have kids participating in that. And we also have the end of semester one on January 21st. In the box, I've got a couple of items which were created with our 3D printer that was donated. A little hard to see, but we've got a dragon, which was created by Sidney Meyer, a senior, and we've got, I don't know, Dyno Dino, not sure which this is, by Tyler Ellison, a ninth grader. These guys were in the class, computer arts and animation, so this is all software created. Lots of hours, there's lots of details on this. It's not just a two-minute project that you create here. Lots of hard work and effort went into these, and so these were made with the donated machine that we got from Mr. Gairman a couple of months ago.
That's awesome. Thanks for bringing those. That's wonderful.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions today? Thank you.
Nope, thank you.
All right, hopefully the mic will pick up my voice. I'll stand close to it. Lots going on at the middle school, and we are getting ready to kick off some project-based learning, our Genius Hour program. Last year, we weren't able to do Genius Hour based on some of the needs and bringing parents in to watch it, and we're real excited to get that back going again. Genius Hour is a program where students pick a passion project, anything that they're interested in. I've seen everything from why do deer shed their antlers, and kids wanted to learn more about that, to how do you make baseballs curve and do different things. The kids pick something that they want to learn about. It can be anything, as long as that it's something that they can't just research in 10 seconds. And they spend some time researching it and planning and presenting it out, and then we have a Genius Hour Expo for families to come in. And basically, then the concept is that each one of those kids is the local genius in our school on that specific topic. So we're pretty excited to get that going in January. We're also, right when we get back, we'll be working on our mid-winter goal setting. Every student sets individual goals, some mostly academically tied to maybe increasing their performance, and then talking about things that they can do to meet that goal, whether they want to read more individual books, specific things that they want to do during the day to score better or perform better academically in study hall, or maybe they want to work on improving to be a better musician. Whatever their goals would be, we work with them, and they have a plan that they design. Prairie Fire Theater kicks off right when we get back. I believe tryouts are on the 10th of January, and that's for grades, students in grades three through eight. And if you haven't seen the Prairie Fire play, it's pretty fun. And then one week, the kids try out and perform by Friday night and Saturday afternoon, or Saturday morning, and there's a play, and I believe they're doing the Wizard of Oz. We're excited to get Prairie Fire Theater running. We'll be doing winter benchmarking at the middle school when we get back, and that's on Fast Bridge, so we take a look at where the students have proceeded with, or how they progressed in reading and math off of that test. It's our first year with Fast Bridge, so we've had some growing pains, and we'll take a look at that. And then we have a data retreat following that, where we'll have teams taking a look at that data and student data and overall achievement data and classroom data to try and continue to make improvement. So those are some of the things coming up right when we get back.
Looking festive tonight.
Yeah, I got that.
I thought you'd have a purple tie.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm trying to keep a low profile with the Vikings these days. Hopefully, they win tonight.
I have a sixth grader, and so he asked me this morning if he should bring a box of tissues to Mr. Benson for tonight, and I said, I think that's a great idea, Easton.
Tomorrow morning.
Yeah, he probably forgot, but I thought it was a really great idea. I like the idea of tomorrow morning. Lots happening at the intermediate school. We had a Drama Rama award ceremony that happened right at the beginning of December. We had third, fourth, and fifth graders compete in Osceola. Our third and fourth graders finished second place with a red ribbon, and then we had a fifth and sixth grade team that finished first place with a blue ribbon. So thank you to Mr. Benson and Leslie Jacobson for offering that to our students. Right before Thanksgiving break, we had a PBIS celebration. All students went to the center and swam, which was my first experience, and I could tell I think the staff had just as much fun as the students did. We had a food drive this month. Kay Erickson had come in and shared with each grade level just on our community's needs and what purpose is a food shelf, and then following that, we had a food drive at our school. We collected 615 items, which equaled out to be 464 pounds of food. Mr. M, and then we had some fifth grade news students deliver that food to the food shelf. So it was a really great learning opportunity, and we thank Mrs. Erickson for coming in and talking to us. I'm told that that's a tradition, so I'm thankful that it carried on. The intermediate school sponsored three families along with the Salvation Army for the Giving Tree. We collected items that were identified, and then I was part of handing those out this Saturday. So I thank the staff for donating those items, and it was wonderful to be able to give those to the families that needed them. The English Language Arts Adoption Series process is continuing. At this time, we have removed a curriculum from our consideration. We have removed CKLA Amplify, and the elementary and the intermediate will carry on with now continuing to look at ARC and HMH. Our next steps include, in January, at our in-service, we're going to have a representative from each company work with grade level teams to address any concerns, any questions, and then to really evaluate the materials that we're looking at. Report cards went home. Helping Hands is an after-school program that's led Brenda Crows and Steph Aymans. So over this fall, they've had, once a month, they have meetings, and it's open to any student that wants to come, and they do some sort of community service project. So so far, they've done cards for veteran and military members, and then they also did Christmas cards for nursing home residents. I'm told that in December, they generally would go sing at nursing homes, but due to COVID, it's just not an option this year, which is a little disappointing. Our third grade students had their concert on December 16th, so they performed for the intermediate school first, and then that same night, they performed for our community members at the high school. And they did a wonderful job, and I want to say thank you to our great music teachers. Finally, I wanted to highlight our news team. We have a news team that creates a broadcast every Friday, and it's made up of fifth grade students, and they do a wonderful job. They highlight students that have taken AR tests, that have achieved their goals. They highlight what's for lunch. There's even a segment with the principal, and they work really, really hard each week to do that, and that's led by Mr. M., Mr. Mylan Arczek, and Mrs. Annie Brayton as well. So it's a wonderful experience for them. Some upcoming things, we have a sing-along coming up on Thursday, Christmas break, and then, like Tom had shared, we will do our benchmark screening as soon as we get back. Ours will start on Tuesday, and we have a five-day window, and it will end that following Monday. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to share our second grade kindness project. Our second grade teachers and students are leading an initiative of kindness in our building. So what I have pictured here is during the month of December, we collected money in the Red Kettle, for the Red Kettle campaign, and this ice skating rink that you're seeing was completely just ice, but for every $10 that our children and families donated to the red bucket, we added a little figure. And so you can see this was quite motivating for our students. As of today, we have collected $410 in the Red Kettle bucket, and we have the rest of the week to try to build up all the time, sort of $500. So it was just, it's so fun. The kids stand in front of the TV in the lobby and just look for the new character. Every morning, we announce who the new character or characters are, and so today, we added a big fat bear, who is not pictured because Becky doesn't have the latest and greatest. But anyway, thank you, Becky, for putting that up for me. But with, along with the kindness campaign, we also collected non-physical food items, and Mr. Sue Wilheim from the food shelf came and collected them for us last week, and there were boxes and boxes. I did not count them, however. That was very important of our body and families for contributing to the Red Kettle campaign and for our food shelf. We also, Mrs. Dan Brogio talked about the ELA adoption. Our next step is now, we are meeting with Teresa Stanley, who is a CISA consultant, and she's going to meet with just Jessica and myself to discuss next steps in eliminating, going from two programs down to one. So we're pretty excited about who we have left, but we have a big decision to make, so that she is going to help us with that. The elementary school has started up their leveling up program. It is a program that encourages children to read. We read at home through book bags, read at school during independent reading time, and the teachers monitor progress of students, and so every time they level up, meaning go from an A to a B, or a B to a C, et cetera, through the alphabet, they get recognized, and they go in the library, and they ring a bell, and the whole library notices it and congratulates the children. So at this time, and we just started the program, we have approximately 90 kids who have leveled up, and it's an ongoing program that we'll do all year long. So when they first level up, they get a certificate, and then they get something on the wall with their picture on it saying that they leveled up, and then every time after that, they get to add a star out in the hallway. It's just a way to incentivize the program. So we're very excited that it started out very successfully. And just a little fun fact, the holiday fun night was earlier this December, and we had 327 participants at the holiday fun night. So at that, we have Santa Claus, we have crafts, we have cookie decorating and storytelling in the media center, and it's just been an all-time favorite, and this year, it just continued to be an all-time favorite. So, any questions? Thank you.
Couple announcements out of special education and people services. Just want to highlight a neat activity happening at the intermediate school, and those are some social skills outings that are put together by our speech-language pathologist, our special ed teachers, and peer educators, in coordination with school administration, of course. So for example, tomorrow, we'll have about 17 fourth and fifth graders going out bowling tomorrow morning. So if you're going to be at Club 53, be prepared to share the lanes with these fourth and fifth graders who are very excited to go. And really, they're working on generalizing just kind of social skills and participation, turn-taking, reciprocity, and good sportsmanship, all those things that are important out in the community environment. So just really neat work there going on with our SLP and our spec ed teachers. There's also been some other activities that have included scavenger hunts in the school forest. They did caramel apples around Halloween, and so these are kind of neat activities that are happening, and just wanted you to know about them. Also in positive news here, we have Mr. Chuck Wellman in our high school is volunteered again to be our district-wide Santa. He will be making the rounds and in the coveted Santa costume this year, as he has in the past, so just want to thank him for his flexibility. He's a really good sport about doing that each year. A couple training updates, we'll have our IEP workshop. We're not elves, so instead of working on toys, we'll be working on IEPs and making sure that we're as compliant as possible with getting those together and hitting timelines. And then the only other update I have is that our student success coordinators and one of our administrators, Jess, joined us to a 504 legal training, and that was sponsored by Chad Wade, who does a lot of work with CISA. On section 504, which is, as you may know, really a disability category or eligibility process for students that may have a disability and need accommodation, but not quite qualify for an IEP through that process. So always a good thing, there's updates happening as far as eligibility for that sort of thing, and new accommodations, and new things coming up around virtual and homebound and those things. So Chad always does a good job in keeping us up to date in our training there. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Okay. Oh, and I'm wearing my purple tie in solidarity with Mr. Benson here. For the record, I am a Green Bay Packer fan, though.
Yep. Yep, he's got to come back up.
You're next.
You don't have anything?
No rush for the weary.
Attention to the agenda here. All right, so we've got the pupil nondiscrimination and educational equity report. So each year, we're required to submit this to the Department of Public Instruction, identifying the name of the person that receives discrimination complaints, the number of complaints received, description of each complaint and its status. So this report was submitted to DPI earlier, I think it was last week. For the 2021 school year, we received one complaint, discrimination based on race, one complaint, discrimination based on disability, and one complaint of harassment based on disability. All these, you can look in the attachment, were resolved informally, really meaning that there wasn't a written process or a formal written complaint via email or a letter that we would typically respond to. So, you know, certainly, these are ones that rise to, we've got, you know, individual problems and issues that are often resolved at the building level. These are just ones that, you know, have risen to the level, that are reported as complaints. So those are resolved. The report has been submitted at this point to the Department of Public Instruction, and so that pretty much relieves us of our obligation, other than to, of course, always be on the lookout to identify, you know, any cases or alleged cases of pupil nondiscrimination in the school district of Amory. Any questions?
Thank you. Now we'll move on to our information items. First one is the school board election.
Okay, school board election set for Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. Two at-large positions. The term of office would begin on April 25th and expire April 27th of 2025. Campaign registration statement and declaration of candidacy, candidacy must be filed no later than 5:00 PM Tuesday, January 4th with the district office. If the primary is necessary, the primary would be held on Tuesday, February 15th, 2022. So that's the announcement about upcoming school board election.
Do you know how many candidates we require a primary?
I think it's more than double the field gets you to a primary, so two positions, you get the five, then you get a primary.
Then we'll have a little review on our referendum.
Okay. Troy Miller and John Hewnig and George Sigsworth, wherever they are needed, are going to fill in the gaps. In regards to referendum, conversation continued from when we met last a couple of weeks ago. So Troy, I'm going to turn it over to you. I'll give you a second or two to take in Troy's sweater vest, and then after that, I'll get started.
Sorry, Mr. Benson, but he trumps you in the festive department. That is, that's a combo.
Well, thank you. I was at the middle school on Friday, and it was sweater day, and I didn't have this one on, I had another, but I think every individual in the building had an ugly sweater on, with the exception of one person, and we'll just use the common name George. But, yeah, it was a great experience. It was wonderful that all the kids would walk by, because I'd be up standing on the ladder, and a couple of kids even noticed that, oh my gosh, he's got holiday socks on, too. So it was, I thought I'd take a chance, maybe the board would have an ugly sweater day today, or something like that.
Thankfully, that was not coordinated. Keith, you dropped the ball. Thank you.
Read the emails.
Well, thank you, thank you for allowing us another opportunity to come back. I'm sure you're maybe tiring of us, but what we did want to do is just touch base and say that we heard you last time, when you said that you would like us to expand a little bit more on the project scope for each of the different buildings, as well as maybe provide some additional graphics for those areas that might need graphics. We met a couple of times in a variety of different situations, just going through the budgets, going through the different work descriptions. Some of the scopes have changed a little bit, because George has had a couple of emergency items come up that we've said, okay, that's no longer in our budget, because you had to find other funds to take care of some of those items, such as the boiler replacement that recently happened at the intermediate school, which was originally on our list, but that had to move up and get done immediately, which there's going to be some of that variability and some of that, and some of that kind of give and take as we go through. Because when we pull together budgets, it's our best guess at what the scope is and what things happen. One of the things that you noticed if you read through the list of all the items is fire sprinkler or fire suppression system. And that's the biggest line item, I think, in terms of cost that'll be hanging out there. And when we called the state to say, can you provide some input or some guidance as to whether you might require us to have a fire suppression system, everybody is really busy. And, and their comment is, we don't have that kind of time to review that at this moment. So we took our best guess at what we think will be required, since we do a lot of these projects, and, and said, this is where we think we'll end up with regard to those types of systems. But if you take a look at what's been going on, the building points of discussion pretty much don't change. If you go building by building then, on the next slide, we took a shot at, and we've been working with your financial folks, to say, what would question one look like if it was thirty-five million dollars? And so they've started a draft of what that question might look like. We included it just so you could start to kind of consider the language or think about what's, what's, what's being written and how that would be conveyed to the public. But we took a shot at both question one and question two, and obviously, those are both drafts. So however you want to handle that when you get together next and accept that language and, and decide whether or not you want to move forward with all or parts of those pieces, that's when we'll, we'll finish writing what is the final version. At the elementary school, for what we've called the thirty-five million dollars worth of work, the building maintenance is tuck pointing. What that is, is basically repairing the masonry on the exterior building. If any of you have been to Europe, stone and masonry has been around for thousands and thousands of years. And, and the one thing that you can see, if you go to any of the old cathedrals and things like that, is it's a constant work of repair. Stone and brick last a long time, but the joints that hold them together don't always. And so they require ongoing maintenance and things like that. And generally, a lot of those joints last a good forty to fifty years before they start to see some deterioration. And depending on the type of wall, sometimes that happens a little more often. So on almost all your buildings, you do need some level of tuck pointing and repair the exterior masonry. And that's really important because when water gets into the building, in our climate, what happens to water when it gets cold?
Freezes and expands.
Freezes and expands. And when that happens, the problem gets worse even faster than those buildings that are in warmer climates. And so that is really one of the highest things on our list, is we need to take care of the outside of the buildings first so that water doesn't get in and cause bigger issues. There's some roofing and repair work that needs to be done above all of the ceilings. And then it's replace the hot water piping and loops to classrooms. That's something that, the piping that's there is just corroded, it's beyond its useful life. Every time you have a bend in the pipe, the pipe gets thin and oftentimes will spring a leak. So replacing the hot water piping is also a really high priority. Code impacts are accessibility improvements. The restrooms aren't all handicapped accessible. And so some of that work needs to be done. Not every restroom requires accessibility, but those that do, we'll go in and we'll address. And then finally, we're going to replace the remainder of the flooring and then there's some classroom casework that needs repairs and/or replacement. At the intermediate school, when we say tuck pointing, most of it is at the main entry to this building. And we've talked about it numerous times, that the details that were done on that particular area just need a little bit of work. There's some synthetic stucco, that's the areas that are up high, need, need some work, miscellaneous roof repairs. And, and then finally, inside the building, refinishing the gym floor in here needs to be done. It's been, been long overdue. At the middle school, we're actually starting the drawings right now for the heat pump replacement. A lot of those are failing and need to really be moving faster than what the referendum might call for. So hopefully, we'll have the drawings done, the work will be bid, and then if the referendum passes, we'll be ready to go because a lot of those mechanical components are really long lead items. And because it's a project that you just can't do during the school year or on a weekend, we want to try to make sure that we set ourselves up to be most successful and get you the best price if we can do that work this next summer. And that's why we're doing those drawings right now and coordinating that with George. The cooling tower needs to be replaced, there's some lighting and ceiling replacement that needs to be done. Few accessibility improvements at the restrooms again, but on the inside, there's some lockers that need to be replaced. And then also, like here, the gym floor needs to be refinished. And then finally, at the high school, the biggest thing is the masonry repair on the outside of the building. There's a lot of it that needs to be done. And then a complete roof replacement, much of that roofing is original to the building. And so if you think about its age, it really does need to happen. Exterior door replacement, security improvements, and the list goes on. The biggest things inside are mechanical, electrical improvements, repairing and replacing some parking lot sidewalk repairs. And then there's some code implications that need to be addressed. And the thing that I always remind the public is code is always changing. And so it's oftentimes frustrating for people to look at and say, how come the price tag's so big? Well, fifty years ago, when the building was done, there was no, there were no fire suppression systems to the caliber that we have today. And there weren't many of the different systems or even technologies that we have today. And so as those change and evolve, codes change. And each time you submit to the state, they expect you to meet the current code in many of those areas. And that's why we have to address those code items. And then on the interiors, once we go through and do a lot of the repair work that's being done, you'll see a lot of new flooring, carpeting, wall finishes, new ceramic tile on the walls just to improve durability. So even though we're doing a lot of things that aren't necessarily seen, there's a lot of freshening up that's going to happen inside that building as well. What that looks like on the inside is we're going to renovate the science rooms, we're going to do some work in the locker room mechanical systems to improve indoor air quality. The agriculture lab, we're going to do some general improvements in that area, much of which includes greenhouse. Believe it or not, you have two greenhouses on the building, one's in science and one's over by the egg area. So we will be addressing the concern structurally for both of those. The envelope of the glass structure is really good shape, it's the masonry down below that needs a lot of work. In the vocational area, there's a lot of work that needs to be done mechanically and electrically, which will allow for some other improvements. And then in that cafeteria lockers comments, with everything else that's going on, we hope that we'll be able to do a number of other sprucing up items to make sure that the front door, when people walk in, will have a positive impact and say, we got something other than just what we can't see above the ceiling. So that was mentioned last time, that that's really important. Next slide. We talked last time also about what the elementary school improvements and upgrades might look like when you look at the elementary and early learning center. So we took a shot at, at kind of roughing out that draft question of what that might look like. Next slide. These are the four critical areas that need to be addressed in that building. Those haven't changed from the last time you've seen it. And then we went through, remove the labels as we had kind of started to talk about, but, but we cleaned up that plan so you can begin to see what that building would potentially look like with the investment. And, and again, you can go through, count the rooms. I think at this point, we'd be ending up with, with additional spaces for the early learning center, additional spaces for the elementary school. And then also, first and foremost, a big change, a radical change in how safety and security works at the front door and things of that nature. So that's, that's the extent. I apologize, there's a couple of spelling errors. John should have never sent the, yeah, he should have caught it. I, I don't know what he was doing, but. So if you have any other questions, we're here to, I hope this helped with some of the questions that you had previously.
In your proposal for the high school, were we going to address moving the office area to the front?
At this point, that is not included in the thirty-five million. It, we, we will be able to do some of that in terms of security improvement, but that was above and beyond the thirty-five million in terms of scope that was identified previously.
So then what triggers the need for sprinklers? What code, or what are we doing to the building that all of a sudden says we have to put in sprinklers?
Believe it or not, some of it's left to interpretation by the person who does the review. Oftentimes for us, what triggers it is the investment you make in the building. So they'll look at the building and say, well, if you're investing twenty-four million dollars and you're removing all the ceilings and exposing everywhere that the sprinkler system should run, now's the time when we, we would expect you to add those systems. Other times, they say, well, if you've got enough fire-rated walls that divide the building up into compartments, or you've got other ancillary systems that might help, they'll say, let's just get the areas of greatest hazard, which is kind of what we're expecting at this point. They'll say, we want to see fire protection in the boiler room and the shop areas where you've got a potential of fire with auto mechanics and other hazardous materials in there, and then let the rest of the building go. So that's kind of where we're sitting right now, is, is that hopefully, we'll be able to get by with that. And we do have some contingencies and things of that nature. So if indeed, we find out that we don't need to sprinkle at all, you know, I think we'll, we're safe to assume, since we did a very similar project down in Owen Withy, they required us to do the vocational area. Worst-case scenario, you know, we've got ways that we can move some funds around and we get to the end of the project, then maybe we can say, all right, there's funds left over that we can move the admin area and do some of those things. But your greatest need by far, and it's, it's unfortunate, you know, because it's a lot of things that you don't see, is the mechanical system is just, it's tired, it's out of date, it's making a lot of noise, it doesn't, what's that?
Ten million.
Ten million dollars worth of things that you can't see. And that's just on the inside of the building. Then you add the masonry and the roofing and everything else. Yeah, it's just, it's just a lot of needs that if you own a home and the water heater goes out, you know how painful that is. You know, it's like, last thing I want to do is spend, you know, fifteen hundred dollars on a water heater, especially at the holidays. But you're just kind of up against that in every building where you've got some amazingly nice facilities, your, your team here does a great job of keeping your buildings looking nice. So a lot of those things just go unnoticed. And then, and then when somebody says and raises their hand and says, we've, we've got some challenges here, you kind of open that box and say, oh my, oh my goodness, you know, if we're, if we're going to start doing mechanical systems, then we really need to also consider electrical and things like that. So, you know, if you've got eighteen months left on an, on electrical system, you know, you're, it's hard to say we're not going to repair that now, as long as we're tearing all the systems that are run by electrical out. So, so that's kind of, kind of how we ended up where we are. But like I said, I think John and I have talked about with George, we do have contingencies because, you know, in this market, you just don't know from day to day if a heat pump is going to cost you seven thousand dollars or nine thousand dollars. And, and we'll find out on bid day. And if the numbers keep coming in good, then we'll be able to tackle, for example, like I mentioned, the administrative move or something like that. But we don't want to promise something and then say, you're not going to get it. We'd rather say, oh my gosh, look at this, we've got a little bit of money left at the end of the project, what would be the next thing on the priority list? And, and, you know, with George and the rest of your administrative team, we've got a priority list that's about eight pages long. So you won't have, you won't be short of things to choose from.
Right. Another thing that is not addressed on here that I've heard a lot of concern about is the weight and the weights in the hall and everything, and that's not addressed at all on here.
Yep. Yep. And that's something, too, we know we might have to do a small addition for mechanical units because right now they're on the roof and the desire would be to bring them inside. Easier to maintain, easier on the roof and everything else. So hopefully, if we, if we can figure it all out, we can expand in that same area where the weight room is and, and get that all to work as one, one addition. I mean, that would ultimately be the best. But I, I hear you there, too.
Is the, in the improved woods and metal shops with the replacing the ventilation there, that would be for the welding area as well there, right?
Yep, welding, there's a foundry area, there's, there's a lot of equipment, a lot of spaces there that even the spray booth and some of those things, you know, all of those systems don't work. And to bring all of that up to meet code and meet the requirements of the program, you know, that's another big chunk of the budget is, is, you know, it's nothing glamorous unless you're a student who's taking that class and it's like, oh my gosh, where's this been the last ten years or, you know, somebody who's teaching the course. So, so when we're done with those areas, hopefully programmatically, they'll see a huge improvement in what they can offer and do with students.
Speaking of that, Dr. Dierfle, would it be inappropriate to ask our egg department and our science department to submit a list of uses of their greenhouses, how they're currently utilizing them? I mean, I guess I know some, but not all.
Sure, that would be egg.
And what they would do with them as the upgrade happened.
That would be egg and science, and I certainly can provide that to you. Absolutely.
I'd like to see that included in the, in the referendum upgrade here.
Sure.
And then our, our bathroom remodels that we're looking at doing in the middle school and the high school specifically, could you just go through a little bit more of that? And then could you, we have currently, we have urinals, I believe, right in the middle school and the high school? And what would that look like or how would that scope of that project be if we were to consider removing or to put more stalls in? Or is there an idea for the bathroom situation as we move forward for a more private situation with that? So could you kind of touch on that, what the, what those upgrades would look like?
Yep. Every place we go, we're seeing a lot more requests for added privacy, not only, you know, in the ladies restroom, but also in the men's. And so we do spend a lot of time working on that. Comfort of the kids is a big issue, not only in terms of, of just using the amenity, but bathrooms are the biggest location for bullying. And so not only do we look at privacy in a stall or at the urinal, we also consider and spend a lot of time talking with you and the administrative team about what goes on in the bathroom, how do we make sure it's observable, how do we make sure that we're watching who's going in and who's going out? So all of those things will be part of what will be addressed when we go through the process of designing or redesigning bathrooms.
Okay.
The other, with the high school, we talked about adding insulation, then putting in deck bars. Can you give a cost recovery of that? If you can work on something there that says what it's going to cost us and what it's going to, how long is it going to pay, repay us for doing that?
Insulation on the roof?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, we have, we have a blended number, but the roof alone is one, one point seven million dollars and change. But that's the membrane and the insulation.
Yep.
So it's likely, there's a good chance you might have to tear off the existing insulation and then add insulation to bring it up to code. So, and that has changed in the last couple of years where a couple, at least two, if not three, more inches of insulation is required than when it was probably built.
And we're, we've got the drawings, so, so actually, as structural has, has downtime, they're going in and they're starting to do the analysis on what would need to be done structurally, if anything, to support the additional load. Because when you add insulation, not only are you adding insulation, you're adding to the drift load because the snow doesn't melt as fast when there's more insulation. So structural's going through those calculations as they have time right now. You know, until the referendum passes, you don't have money to spend. So, so we go on our best guess. The other thing that we'll be doing is we'll be benchmarking your buildings before and after so that you can see how much energy was consumed before you go through this process and then how much energy you're consuming for two years after the projects are done.
That was the middle school. It's actually three point four million at the high school.
And I was going to say, I knew it was more than that.
I was going to say. Don't say it.
I clicked on the middle school tab, sorry.
Yeah. I think out of the thirty-five million, it's five million dollars in roofing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to add a little more on the mechanical at the high school. Ten million is just the HVAC and that's about indoor air quality, too. Not only is there a maintenance issue that George has been, he's been chasing issues for a lot of years and it's just getting to a point that needs to be taken care of. But, you know, one, it'll take care of maintenance, that's just been a problem, but the indoor air quality is going to be night and day. I mean, the type of mechanical system that we're talking about. So that'll be another advantage. Again, ten million is just HVAC. There's another several million just in piping upgrades and things like that.
Yeah, because I know, in like, what, 2008 or '09, you replaced ductwork in the high school?
2008 or '09, you replaced the ductwork in the high school?
Yeah, just the fire ward.
Yeah.
And we may be able to use all that, yeah.
Okay.
So right, right now, because of your system age, you have rooms in your building that are, that the background noise level is over forty-four decibels. There's a lot of states out there that don't allow mechanical systems in learning spaces to be over thirty-five and some states even have it lower than that. So, you know, that is, you know, it's a, it's a bell curve. So you're talking about almost a thirty percent noise reduction in background noise levels, you know, by switching out and getting rid of the old system and bringing in the new, you've just got, the components in the system pieces are so loud that it's just...
And this HVAC system that we're looking at potentially putting in will help eliminate the hot pockets and the cold pockets. the hot pockets and the cold pockets in that high school building, correct?
That's correct. And a big part of that, not only a new mechanical system, but new controls, digital controls.
And it'll all function together as one unit instead of like sixteen different units, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yep. And we'll, right now, if you go in that building, the walls only go four inches above the ceiling, which is also a big deal when it comes to trying to manage the temperature and the noise. So we will be taking some of the walls all the way up to structure just to make sure that some of those challenges are also being addressed as we go through the building. So, you know, again, if you're, if you're somebody walking in the building and, and you see it just for basketball games, you're going to look around and say, wow, this, not much has changed. I mean, it looks prettier, the colors are better. But, but, you know, if you're there every day, you're going to notice a significant difference.
Will that help eliminate those like space heaters that we have in like those dead corridor areas too where the, there's door and then we have a heater and that all of those will be coming out, correct?
In vestibules, you'll still have a cabinet unit heater, that's where you've got basically an airlock. But in some places in the building, the building's been added on to, door positions have changed. And so those wall heaters are still in there just as a leftover from the way the building used to work. I'm not sure how many of those still work, George? Might be a couple of them. But, but we are even talking about, in some of the locations, right now, there's not a vestibule, but there still is a cabinet unit heater because so much cold air comes through that set of doors that, that those cabinet unit heaters are necessary. And we're, in the budget, we have putting in a separate vestibule to control that cold air and hopefully also the noise and everything else.
Okay.
So here would be the timeline moving forward. You don't take any action here this evening. On January fourth, Lisa Voison from Baird Financial will be here to walk through the resolution question or questions, depending on what you want to do, number one and/or number two. And you don't take any action on the fourth either. You need to see it before you vote on it, which, that's the idea. And then on the seventeenth of January, if that's what you want to do, then you would make a motion to go ahead and approve a resolution or resolutions at that time. And then April fifth is the day after that, between January seventeenth and April fifth. The goal is to give people information so they can vote accordingly. Building meetings have already been scheduled for me to make a presentation about the facts of the day, largely what you saw here over the course of January into February, so everyone's informed. And then we'll go outside of these four walls in these four buildings and, and start meeting with other civic organizations to give them the information too. So that's the timeline moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you, Troy. Thank you, John, for all of your work.
Thanks for bringing the Christmas cheer. That's fabulous.
Happy holidays.
Thanks.
Hope to all get you what you asked for for Christmas.
Next, we have the district report cards. Okay, I will bat leadoff on this and then I'm going to have the other members of the administrative team assist me with their particular buildings. So if you could follow along on the screen, and I'll look at my handout here, and you could do one or the other. The first bit of information that you need to know, the school card took a dramatic change from last year to this year. And the dramatic change is really in its appearance and also in the manner by which they generate a score. There are four priority areas and you'll see those noted on that slide, that second slide or first slide after the title slide. Student achievement growth, target group outcomes, target group means you're bottom twenty-five percent, and then you're on track in post-secondary readiness. So that is the dramatic change to the report card. Now COVID obviously has presented some challenges to public schools in regards to how we gather our data. We lost five months of instruction and some lost that and more. So please know, right on the report card, it says, due to COVID-19 pandemic, please use caution when interpreting scores and ratings. Should be a lot of caution because it's been very hard on kids, very hard on families and very hard on schools. We didn't have a report card in nineteen twenty, direct result of COVID. With COVID-19, students across the state missed significant face-to-face instruction over a two-year period. Across the state, forward test scores, and that's for, in essence, intermediate and middle school kids, dropped between seven and thirteen percent, depending on the grade level and the testing subject. And lastly, please know, Wisconsin dropped the requirement to test at least ninety-five percent of your students. So while Amory tested ninety-nine percent, the state average for the forward exam was at eighty-six percent, and that's the average, meaning there were many below that and many of our neighbors were below that. So the 2021 scorecard, again, there wasn't a scorecard last year, exceeds expectations, meaning exceeds expectations for the Department of Public Instruction, expectations for schools. And we have, so as you see here, exceeded expectations every single year there's been a scorecard. And you might be thinking, well, wait, two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen is not seven years. There were three times where there wasn't a scorecard, eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, and nineteen twenty. Again, that wasn't our choosing, that was the state simply didn't issue one. So seven years, we exceeded expectations in each of those seven years. So as a district in English, Language Arts and Math, that's where you're going to get your scores from those two subject areas. Amory is the red, the state is the blue. You can see that Amory significantly outperformed the state in English, Language Arts and in math. And that's been the case every year there's been a district report card. Priority area growth, which means, again, you're looking at an isolated group of kids, actually, sorry, priority area growth in English, Language Arts and Math, the targeted group is the next one, significantly outperformed the state in English, Language Arts and Math. Now target group outcomes, meaning you're bottom twenty-five percent. In regards to achievement, we were at twenty-five percent. Now remember, achievement means you're measuring the achievement of kids that traditionally hasn't done very well. Growth, we had significant gains there. Absenteeism and graduation, our kids are here and our kids are graduating. That's in essence, the long story short there. Priority area on-track readiness for graduation, you'll see here, the state does fairly well, if not very well, and the school district of Amory does just as, and in some cases, better than the state. So I'm going to turn, unless you have questions for me on that first portion of data, I'm going to turn it over to Josh. Are there any questions for me, Dale?
So just a question, so we tested ninety-nine percent of our students?
Yes, on the forward exam, in the ACT as well.
And the state average was eighty-six percent?
Correct.
And of that state average, is it kind of safe to assume that the fourteen percent that didn't test were likely...
I don't know who chose to test who. I can only say the standard in Amory has always been, we got to get to ninety-five percent. That's always been our benchmark for testing forever, way back to the days of WKCE. We test every single kid unless they have a documented need where they can't take the test, and then they take an alternative version of the test. So we tested everybody that we were supposed to test.
Right. Okay.
And we always do.
And, I mean, I would have to make the assumption maybe that some of the schools that only tested the eighty-six percent would have likely withheld some of the students that could have performed lower.
You could use some strategy there if you wanted to, if you wanted to pick certain folks to not test. That would improve your scores, that's absolutely true. What our neighbors did, I have no idea. I only know that we tested everybody and we always will, because it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, it's the right thing to do.
How would you go about saying, well, you don't have to take the test, but you do? That wouldn't be fair and I wouldn't even begin to want to have that conversation.
Right.
Other questions for me? Okay, Josh, you're up.
Okay. At the high school, if there is a group of kids over the last twenty-plus years that I would not have wanted to go through COVID, this would have been the group. We have been tracking them for a number of years, as you're well aware, and some of our state assessment benchmark testing scores were extremely concerning. But, you know, we definitely saw some warning signs and some, some data previous. One of the hard parts about all this, Becky, you want to go to the next slide? So you look at our achievement and you'll see that our achievement overall in English and Math, the two primary areas that we're scored on, you know, were above the state average. The primary area of concern for us that really hit us was the growth and then the target group. You know, in the case of, let's say that you are currently a senior right now, so you took the ACT last year as a junior. Let's hypothetically say they had English the first semester of their ninth grade year and then they might not have had English again until the second semester of their sophomore year. Well, that basically got cut in half and they missed almost their entire tenth grade in-person classroom English year. And then let's say that their junior year English class, as an example, wasn't scheduled until the second semester where they had English January, February, and then they took the ACT at that point. Obviously, the, the growth wasn't going to be the same for that group of kids. I guess that's the best explanation I can give you in terms of how COVID impacted that group of kids. The other thing I would mention is because of the ASPIRE testing for ninth and tenth graders is in April, those kids actually didn't get a benchmark test the year of COVID and so their growth was based off of a year and a half earlier when they're just starting to go through puberty and all sorts of changes are going on in their lives. On the priority area, target group outcomes, this is our bottom twenty-five percent. You'll see that that's where the achievement, you know, kind of talking what Dale was referring to in the number of kids tested, obviously those are the groups of kids that probably, you know, if you could exclude your scores, but we don't do that. I think the biggest thing that you'll note is the absenteeism rate for our bottom twenty-five percent kids, our target group, is at sixty-five percent. And being at school means everything for your success. And in the priority area, on-track to graduation, the only way I'm going to comment or make a comment about is the absenteeism. And that refers to your score based on the number of kids who are chronically absentee. I will tell you that we were one hundred percent honest to a fault in how we coded all of our students' absences last year. And, you know, we were extremely, extremely honest about that. I'll just leave it at that. Academic performance over time, you'll notice the top areas, the golds in both English and mathematics, the number of students that we had achieving that highest level shrunk, whereas the bottom levels increased a little bit and that has a significant impact on your overall score. On the flip side, ACT composite scores, you'll notice when you take our past seven-year average, we still had a very good composite average score, fourth in the Middle Border Conference out of eight schools, eighth in CISA XI, and that is with us having, you know, one of the lowest scores in the history of Amory this past year. And then you'll notice AP scores, we were above the Middle Border Conference average with the percentage of students who scored three or above in that area.
And if I could chime in, Josh, the Middle Border Conference and CISA XI are really highly ranked in the state of Wisconsin. CISA XI is the second highest performing of all twelve CISAs on the ACT and the AP.
Graduation rate at the high school, very good, ninety-nine percent. A lot of time is spent working with kids on credit recovery and getting kids to the finish line. One thing I would point out is that we've had tremendous success with an alternate education program we've been working on the last two years. I am very proud of the work that Mr. Jesse Rose has done with those kids and we've seen a lot of growth from those kids as well. And it's the group of kids that doesn't like going to school, but, you know, they're coming here and they're working with us and we appreciate that. Action plan, you know, since we got the data back, I'm not going to lie to you, it's been extremely stressful trying to figure out, you know, we've got this, there are so many things that we do well in this district at Amory High School that aren't measured on a scorecard, unfortunately. And we want to be able to maintain and keep as many of those things as we can and make us special. And the block scheduling, so many opportunities for our kids. And so with that in mind, we've had to look at things that we can do to try to, for lack of better words, teach to the test and that state assessment. As I mentioned before, we've already started a section plan, get over ninth through eleventh grade students, take practice ACT tests in November. We're already analyzing that data, looking for our areas of strengths, weaknesses. Some of you have students who are in our building, the students got individual reports. They spent, I was really impressed with our students. They took a lot of time to look at the results of that to find out their own areas for growth. So we're hoping that this will be a good thing. We're doing some fast bridge benchmark testing in English. This is a new program that we've been working, it's a little bit more tailored towards our elementary, intermediate and middle school level students, but we are getting some data and we will take any data point that we can get to try to improve our performance. We're focusing on bellwether activities in our core areas with ACT question focus. We're going through a constant data analysis of our spring 2020 assessments, looking for anything that we can do, you refer to it, first we look for the low-hanging fruit, the easiest things that we can change, fix. Attendance as an example, there's, there's points to be had on attendance. So we're always looking for ways, easy areas to improve. Schedule tweaks that we're looking at, we're exploring some options specifically for the ninth grade, year-long English, year-long pre-algebra, year-long algebra options, we haven't locked these in yet. It becomes complicated when you're trying to preserve a block schedule, which we are so famous for in this part of the state, and yet knowing and understanding, if we want to have that scorecard, we're going to have to figure out some solutions here. So this is something that we're exploring. We're also looking at hand scheduling of our 10th graders who are in that target group, that bottom twenty-five percent, giving them some more supports on our end and kind of guiding them to where we feel they really need to be in terms of what classes they're taking. Along with ACT bootcamp for juniors, we feel as though it's been very successful, we've got a nice track history of, of working with that. We're also going to do some review sessions with our ninth and 10th graders for their ACT ASPIRE. Bottom line is, you know, we know what the state is going to be assessing us on and those are the areas that we really have to put some focus on, at the same time trying to preserve our CTE academies, our house building, our fun, exciting science classes that get our kids out and about. We're trying to find that happy balance right now in preserving all those things. So, any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a couple of comments that, as somebody who has hard spent in education her whole life, it's always gripped me to my core to teach to tasks, standardized tasks. I think if you're in this business of education, it'll gripe anybody to their core and it should. And what we do here is so much more than that and the community, I have seen greatly rally around not so much what we do academically in the classroom as far as test scores because they know that every kid takes tests differently and it's, it's a day. It's a really a snapshot of a day for, for a child. And the activities that we do in the classrooms, these kids far remember outside these walls than they do a test that they took on a day. It's probably the one time that these tests, when these tests happen, that our block scheduling kind of bit us, like you said, with that gap, which is unprecedented. We've never seen this kind of break happen in our modern time of education. But block scheduling, as somebody who's been an educator on both ends of that spectrum, block scheduling versus hourly scheduling, there's just, there's nothing that you can do at a middle school or a high school level in an area like I was a teacher of a vocational education area that can be accomplished in an hour-long schedule. It just can't happen. There's nothing meaningful that can happen to give those kids those opportunities. So, I mean, I commend you for wanting to hang in there with our block scheduling, it sets us apart. It's, it's so much easier for even for the kids, for our students, their own brains at the end of the day, trying to figure out what they have to do and to really have that laser focus. It's so important. I think that also shows us how important it is for not only kids to be here, but the impact that it's had now that kids have been back and we've had almost a whole last year of in-person learning. And now this year, that structure and the being the same every day, because we lost kids. They're here, they're physically here in the building, but I know we've lost them mentally checked out. Probably, we're not seeing it probably so much at the middle school level, I would say, but I, I'll bet at the high school level, we're seeing it, especially in those sophomore, juniors and seniors, that it's going to take time. It's going to take time to have that, that schedule put back into these kids after being out of school for five months. So... So, this is, I think the board understands, I certainly understand as an educator, this is a snapshot, and keep doing what you're doing, and we'll get back there.
Thank you.
I just want to talk a bit on Dr. Johnson's question on test participation, because like we said, that we're always penalized if you test less than 95% of your students, there's a penalty there. And if you take into consideration, there's a lot of kids that maybe, you know, in severe special ed rooms that aren't able to test, there is very little wiggle room as far as, you know, making sure that, and then there's always a few people that are out. You get penalized if you test below 95. As soon as the state said we're waiving that, there was a big rush of people just pulling kids from testing. Yeah, and like you said, if, we tested 99% of our students and the state average was 86, so that means 50% of the schools were below 86. I saw schools down in the 40s, 50s, 70s. You know, we can kind of judge on maybe who tested and who didn't, but it's certainly hard to do any comparison between one and another, because their score came through whoever tested, so.
It's likely the higher performing kids that are gonna test.
Yes, and so it's hard to make a lot of comparisons there necessarily, at least on struggling numbers. We're real pleased with the middle school, our number came in at 87.5. That gave us a rating of significantly exceeds expectations or a five-star. So we're real pleased, it's the highest rating you can get. You take a look at the achievement areas in ELA and math, just so people understand, these aren't percentages, you get basically a number of kids that were advanced and then a few less that were, and then less for basic, and you don't get any if they were minimal. And this is, these are, scores are three-year averages, meaning that you're taking a look at three different areas of data. The next one on priority areas growth, this is the one that we're the most proud of. You can see there on English Language Arts and Math, that basically considers where was the student that tests before. They have expected growth for specific students, how much should a student grow each year? And then either you meet that growth and then you're at 50, or you exceed that growth. Pleased, our score of 100 is the highest you can get, which means that Amory Middle School, English Language Arts kids had the highest growth in the state of Wisconsin, and their math growth was right there, too. So it was very, very good. And that one is the most important, because, you know, some kids struggle and some kids don't. But if you get them and you say, we're gonna make sure that you grow no matter where you are, and then you get the growth scores that are highest in the state, that means that my teachers and the students performed to the expectations we had for themselves. Very, very pleased with that. The priority of the target group, again, that takes your bottom 20% from the test the year before, so the year before, who were the bottom 25%? And how did they do the following year? So you take a look at how well they achieved and then how well they attended.
What does achieve really mean?
Achievement means how well did they perform on that state test academically.
So it's not, obviously, not recognizing their growth, it's just recognizing their...
Right. Well, the growth is underneath. The growth is underneath, so how much did they achieve, and then how much did they grow? So you can take a look there, again, their achievement. Again, it's your bottom 25% from the year before, you're expecting that their achievement isn't gonna be as high as the other students, but you're taking a look at comparisons to other districts and then your growth. And so again, there, I was really pleased because those kids grew tremendously. And then you have absenteeism and attendance. A lot of people ask, what's the difference between the two numbers? Attendance is basically the students that each day, what is your attendance. Absenteeism is the kids that need to attend. So, you know, you can over, you know, we average around 96% attendance, but then maybe you had a lot of kids, maybe, if you had some kids that were missing less than, or more than 10%, that's a second score. There's two scores there, so it's important to understand that difference. So then that priority score in the next one, kind of just lays out again how well our students attended. And as you know, attendance tends to get better as kids get younger, because they don't drive places and, you know, it's not in school, so attendance is pretty strong. And then the absentee rate, and in our school, we don't have graduation, so at the middle school, the priority area is math, I want students at eighth grade to be doing math at grade level, that's the score. And then when you get to the lower levels, it's reading. High school, it's graduation. You can take a look at the performance there again over time. And like we said, our scores fell, the state's scores fell, you know, like eight to 12 percent or 12, in our district, and in our scores fell considerably less than that. And so we're pleased that the kids performed. If you take a look at the highlights, our score, I gotta hold it closer, our score, score rating of significantly exceeds expectation. We've exceeded, or significantly exceeded expectations for all eight years of school report. So there's been district report, there's been eight school reports throughout the state. Overall, our score of 87.5 was the 16th highest score out of 382 middle schools, which puts us in the top 5%. And like I mentioned, our growth scores was one of the top scores in the state, the highest it could be in ELA. And that just showed that Amory students grew academically at a much higher rate than other students. Action plan, always taking a look at what we can do better. We want to study all state and local academic and behavioral data and continue to take a look at how well our kids are doing. We want to look for areas of improvement, our reading, our readings, and math scores, it's specific grade levels that we want to see improvement, and talking about how we're gonna get there. We want to take a look at performance of subgroups, just because some groups are, our students not, and why would that be? And then we want to take a look at that performance of that other type of kids, making sure that we're helping them succeed. Also, another action plan we talked about is increasing and improving our PLC work. Maybe have stronger common formative assessments. This has nothing to do with the state test, but to me, what's more important is what's happening in that classroom every day. And so we take a look at how well our kids are performing on our expectations in the classroom, and do we have good common formative assessments that are helping us understand which kids are not performing, so then we can then react to that before, you know, right at the middle of the instruction, can we make changes and adjust on the fly in that classroom to make sure that we're reaching every kid, and if we're not, have interventions so that we can get them. But just as important is to design, and this is one thing our school could do a lot better on, is designing and implementing more strategies for reteaching, for interventions, but then also, what are we gonna do with the kids that are already showing mastery and finding more enrichment programs? Like, you know, if you go through and you take a look, okay, these kids are really struggling and they need to get some extra help, how about for those kids that don't need to hear it again, what are you gonna do for those kids for enrichment? And that's something we want to continue to take a look at. So that's the middle school.
Yeah, I would argue that you have the roughest building as far as when you talk about academics and life changes that these middle schoolers are going through. And that's a real statement and a hats off to what you're doing at the middle school, and it's a real team effort there for all of the teachers and all of the support staff there that's really fostered these kids. And I know even the couple of classes that are in the high school now that have struggled were identified early, that the middle school really helped them along to get them up to where they needed to be. It's a real testament to what you're doing at the middle school there. That's a tough age, so I know you're always looking for better ways to, to close these achievement gaps and really doing it there, so I think that'd be a great idea to really look at those kids that are really achieving and ways that we can further foster those along, too.
Right. And I think the important thing, and we always talk about this in our meetings, that we're a small district and we touch all of these kids, and so every school and every building belongs to everyone here, you know? And the kids that I got, they had awesome education below them, and the kids that Josh gets come from me, so we're all working on this together to work forward.
True. Total team effort.
Thanks.
Yep.
Next up is the intermediate school report card. You can see we're happy with a score of 78.7 of exceeds expectations. The next slide, priority area is achievement. You can see that Amory significantly outperformed the state level in both ELA and math, so approximately 10 points in ELA and 11 points in math. In growth, I would really echo Tom's thoughts on the importance of growth for us. In ELA, we had a growth score of 64 compared to the state average of 66, and then in math, we had a score of 81.2 compared to the state average of 66. The English Language Arts growth is a high priority for us, really using our benchmark screeners that we have in January, you know, we did those in fall, that's really driven our instruction and how we're supporting students. The program that we use, FastBridge, has identified interventions, and those are really important to us. We've noticed that with COVID, at the primary grade level, really foundational skills have been impacted greatly, and that would reflect our ELA scores. So that's your decoding, and fluency, and phonemic, and phonological awareness, those are all the foundational skills that you need to be able to read. So we're doing a lot of backfilling. We're really using those interventions, we're really leaning on our tier-two and tier-three interventions. Tier-two happen within a classroom, tier-three is our title support, so really leaning on those resources and really using our data to drive that instruction in all areas of curriculum. The next priority is our target group outcome, so as Tom and Josh both shared, that's our bottom 25th percentile. We, based on, as a district, based on our free and reduced rate, we are weighted more heavily on growth rather than achievement, and so we really focus on the growth of our students, making sure that they're all making the gains that they need to make. The next priority is the on-track to graduation. You can see that we really align with the state averages. The bottom red is language arts, so that is our third grade students, that's their language arts score. As Tom had shared, it looks a little bit different in each building. Academic performance over time, as Tom shared and Josh, the statewide average dropped eight to 12%. We saw a drop of 8%, so we're happy that that's on our lower side. If you look at our, our three points of data here, we average, when we're looking at our advanced and proficient students, we're averaging above the 50th percentile, so approximately 55%. 1920, we had 46% of our students that finished in the advanced or proficient. That was ELA. This one is math. Scores are strong, we averaged 58% testing advanced and proficient, and in 1920, we had a 9% drop, looking at approximately 47% of our students testing proficient and advanced. Some highlights for us is exceeding expectations, also really highlighting that growth score. We really, really made great growth. We actually surpassed some of the growth that was predicted for us. We had a math score of 81.2, as I said, compared to the state average of 66. I think some celebrations are recognizing our greatest populations of growth in math, so the students that made the greatest gains in math were students that were not proficient last year. And then really, a shout-out to our special ed department, is our students with disabilities surpassed their predicted gains, that's in math. And in ELA, again, strong gains, students with disabilities had our greatest growth with a 3.5, so that's .5 over their predicted growth. And then also, students that were not proficient made more growth than what was projected. And last highlight is our achievement score. The English Language Arts score was 70.8, while the state average was 60.5, and the achievement score in math was 77.9, while the state average was 66.8. Our action plan will be to continue to focus on our district's three initiatives, and so the first is PBIS. We will continue to implement our PBIS-tiered system, so positive behaviors, using that to track behaviors and supports. We know that behaviors need to be in place so that academics can flourish, that's a big focus at our, in our district and at our primary grade level. We will continue to use the practice of universal instruction in tier-two and tier-three supports, and those are really targeted behavior supports for students that need them, and we use data to identify those students. And then using Second Step Curriculum, which is a universal instruction in our classroom that just supports social, emotional learning. PLC, we will focus on professional learning communities as a building, so utilizing and using common informative and somitiv assessments in both math and reading. In math specifically, we have strong scores, so we will continue to implement strong mathematical practices to show continued growth in all grade levels. In reading, we will improve the achievement and growth score for all grade levels. We're gonna focus on increasing the growth scores for our bottom 25% students. And something that's important as we navigate our curriculum adoption is learning more about the science of reading. Science of reading is foundational skills, again, that phonological and phonemic awareness, so we will continue to learn more about that. We will learn how that supports our practices, how that supports our students, and we are going to adopt and implement a new language, English Language Arts curriculum. And so that professional development will be ongoing for our teachers within the first year, second year, third year of using it, is really making sure that they have the resources and they know how to use it, and we're doing, we're using it with fidelity and equity for our students. And then our last is trauma-sensitive schools, is we will gain knowledge on the social, emotional, and academic effects of trauma. That comes from district professional development, building-wide professional development, and a lot of personal development for our teachers. They're really committed to our trauma-sensitive practices here at school, and we will implement trauma-sensitive practices to support whole student learning and to support our own staff as well. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to stay up for this part?
I can do the next two slides, give you a break. The next two slides are intermediate slash middle, so I'll take those. Basically, what it depicts is in English Language Arts and Math, Amory does much better than the state. You see the red better than the blue in both of those cases. And we'll move on.
What is that percentage, like, I mean, 45% of students?
You talk, hold on, Tom, if you want to take it.
I mean, I hope it's not 45% are passing, that's not...
Let's not pass. So the state, the state puts ratings of advanced, proficient, basic, or minimal, and so that's the percentage of students that would score at the proficient level. For people get real excited, just to understand, first of all, these, our scores dropped, they were hovering around the 50th before, and it came down a little bit, but the state's, you know? And just for you to understand, these tests are written to be very difficult, so that there's room for growth for kids over time, up or down, and so they're not, you know, written, so they, our goal is always to get everyone proficient. But just to clarify, these scores that you're seeing right here are in the top 15% to the top 10% in the state of Wisconsin, so, yeah, it looks like, well, here's what proficiency levels, but, you know, it's kind of like a baseball player, you hit 300 and you're amazing. So, you know, ultimately, they're made to, for kids to show growth over time. Our goal's always to get everyone proficient, but...
So this is the common percentage of proficient?
Proficient, yeah, not who passed, proficient, so, yeah.
And yours is advanced, proficient, and minimum?
And minimal, yep. Yeah, and so, and again, just so that, right, those, these scores are, you know, like on the way high-end, it's just hard to understand. It's hard to take a look at that and say, well, what does that mean? It's not like that you took a test and you, and you got a 40%. It's a 46 to 50% met this score that they are expected for this barrier. We could pre-put them out as basic scores, too, which made basic, we could do that if you wanted to see that down the road. But I think we want to look at proficiency, everyone does.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
Elementary.
So the elementary school does not have the forward exam only for our Montessori students, so there's about 18 of those children, and it's not a strong enough cohort to report on it individually, and that's why the elementary school does not get a forward exam. But as Mr. Benson reflected, our score is kind of affected on how the rest of the district does from our building on. So what we do use is we have the FastBridge testing, the FastBridge learning is our assessment tool, it is a benchmark assessment, and it is required, the assessment of reading readiness is required at the elementary school. And basically, as Jessica referred to, we really focus a lot on the foundational skills, it's the foundation of phonics and phonemic awareness, letter sound knowledge, et cetera, that builds the foundation of reading. So at the elementary school, you will see on the next slide, what I have given you information on, this is a lot in this slide, but I'm just gonna have you focus to that more orange color. We're looking at growth, right, growth of students throughout... Growth of students throughout the year. So this particular slide shows the early reading in English, and it shows the entire year. So the red is our zero. It reflects the zero to nineteenth percentile. The yellow is the twentieth to twenty-ninth, almost thirtieth percentile. Green is thirtieth percentile to eighty-fifth percentile. And then the blue is the eighty-fifth percentile and above. And so you can see on each segment of the year, fall, spring, fall, winter, and spring, the number of students that move and the percentage of students that move. So our goal is to get eighty percent of our students to score at or above the thirtieth percentile. So if you look at that lighter orange color, that's where I would ask you to focus. We're looking at the growth from fall to spring. So our ELA kindergarten students scored at the seventy-fourth percentile, just short of the eightieth percentile. Keeping in mind that we did lose five months of instruction, I want to say kudos to our families and to our teachers and to our students for the work and the progress that they have made, given this scenario that we were in. Also, FastBridge is a brand-new assessment tool to us. It was in 2021. Our, that elementary school began with it first, so we were kind of piloting that program last year, and then the rest of the district is taking off from it this year. One of the measures that's different with FastBridge is they measure the thirtieth percentile and up to the one-hundredth percentile as being proficient and advanced, where our previous started at the twenty-fifth percentile and above. So, first grade, you can see that they had one of the larger growths, but you can see they started out quite long in the fall at forty percentile, ended up at fifty-seventh percentile. Our second graders in reading went from the sixty-ninth percentile to seventy-sixth percentile. And then our third graders were at the seventy-first percentile in the fall and ended at the sixteen-eighth percentile. Then we switch over to math. Math has been a stronger suit over the last few years in our district at the elementary school. You can see that our kindergarten went from seventy-nine percentile to eighty-one. Small growth, but we met the goal. Our first graders went from sixty-nine to seventy-ninth percentile. Our second graders went from seventy to seventy-seven, and our third graders went from eighty-one to seventy-five.
Now, are your third graders only Montessori?
Only Montessori, yes. So again, approximately eighteen students. So then, some of our highlights. One of the highlights was that we adopted the FastBridge as a universal diagnostic reporting screener. It's also a progress monitoring tool, so we can use it weekly with our students to gauge, performance to gauge if they're learning the curriculum that is being taught. And again, it says that we are extending it from third through twelfth grade this current school year. FastBridge measures are based on students performing above the thirtieth percentile instead of above the twenty-fifth percentile would be proficient. Community through second grade increased the percentage of students scoring above the thirtieth percentile in reading and in math. So then we have our action plan. In ELA, we are really, really focused, as Jess and I have talked all year long, about getting the right program and making sure that the program is going to hit those foundational skills and is going to correlate with the Wisconsin state standards. One of the major changes that we started right away, actually last year in the winter, is we implemented Haggerty. It's a curriculum that teaches explicit skills in phonemic awareness, phonics, and decoding. And we can already tell a difference from this fall's FastBridge scores. That is just amazing, an amazing difference. We are also this year implementing sign laws, which is a Tier One instruction by explicitly teaching speech sounds and the options for spelling each of the sounds, so students can make the connection between speech sounds and various letter patterns that represent them. That's another big action plan item that we are working on this year. Again, developing a comprehensive ELA program. So what we are really focused on this year without having our new curriculum is we are really looking at our essential standards. And in our PLCs, teachers are focusing weekly on where they are focusing on the instruction. So that they are including that important professional skills such as phonemic awareness, phonics, decoding, word attack skills, et cetera. Again, I can't say enough about the work that the teachers do in PLCs. They work together as a team. They collaborate. They share. It's just amazing. I look back at the beginning of my career when everybody worked in isolation, basically, and now they all come together and they work together, and it just is good for kids. And then, as Jessica referred to, we're looking and taking our time at really focusing on our reading adoption. And so, and she talked about the science of reading, and we want to make sure that we are adopting a program that has those components. Math, one of the big things that we did this year is the implementation of member talks, incorporating number sense activities that require critical thinking and mental math to put our students through that forward exam. And then in PBIS, you can see we have a number of initiatives. We're looking at trauma-sensitive practices. We're building universal termative-sensitive approaches, restorative practices in our classrooms, providing ongoing trainings for our certified and support staff, implementing culturally-responsive practices. So throughout the year, we recognize Hispanic, Native American, Black History, and Asian Pacific Islander months. We developed this year an RTI, multi-tiered system of support and professional development to our staff on the MTSS system of academics and behavioral supports. So that's the elementary school. Behind the classroom, I'm assuming you're going to cover that?
Yes, I'll handle that, unless they have questions for you.
Sure, I noticed that, so in the green, so it's that thirty, is it the thirtieth percentile to the eighty-four point ninety-nine percentile?
Yes.
Is that for all intents and purposes? I mean, it's a wide range. So is it all intents and purposes, like, is it, I mean, is there anything that breaks that down further? Do you set that percentile, or does FastBridge set that percentile? How is that?
So, these are the reports to get right to FastBridge, but we look at individual children to set individual. So when teachers are working on their ASLOs, their student learning objectives, they actually have a table with their child, their classroom, and we can see the child progressing, and we can knock that down to a daily, well, weekly, monitoring. So, yes, this kind of clumps it and gives a number. So you're probably thinking, well, how many kids are at the thirtieth percentile? How many are at, you know, the eighty-fifth?
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering, does it make a difference, the thirtieth percentile versus like the sixtieth percentile?
Yes.
There's kind of a huge ranging gap in there.
Absolutely. And we monitor that.
I would assume you did. I just was kind of wondering, like, if that was just a FastBridge thing, that's how it was.
That's a FastBridge thing, but we can dumb it down in their reports to individual children. It's beautiful.
Okay.
Yeah, very informative.
Yeah, because this is really new, right? I mean.
Very new. This is just our second year.
Yeah.
And it also, it will provide specific interventions for teachers to do with their kids, individual.
I remember when we went to this presentation, we had this presentation, that it was a tool that you were hoping to get way more out of, and it sounds like you're getting that value out of it.
Yes, and we have a lot more to learn, but we are doing well.
Good.
So, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, the last couple of slides are mine. Obviously, a scorecard is just out of score. There are a lot of things that we do as a district that you can't measure statistically. For instance, we have an outdoor classroom at the elementary, a CTE construction academy, where we're building houses in our community, horsemanship classes, where we actually take kids out and train horses right on-site at a horse farm. We have outdoor spaces such as our school forest, our wetland, our lake, prairie, vegetable garden. We do an environmental trip over to Lake Wappo. We've been doing that forever, other than the one year for COVID. And not to be forgotten are our program options. We have a legacy traditional option, interelementary and intermediate. We have a Montessori option. We have a project-based learning option, and we have CTE academies throughout our high school. These are all things that you don't get credit for, if you will. And then there's the abundance of extracurriculars that go beyond that, that are athletics and co-curriculars, such as all of our music offerings. So this is the rest of the picture, so to speak. Any questions for me in regards to ScoreCard or for the other administrators that are here? Okay, thank you.
Then we'll go on to our first reading of the Board Policy, one eighty-six.
Okay. You'll see, there's two items that go with this. There's the public participation at board meetings, and then in addition to it, there's an actual exhibit. So one's on one side, the other's on the other. You will see the changes noted in blue. Again, this is a first reading, so there's no action taken this evening. That would occur at the next meeting if that's what you wanted to do. So the highlights on the first item, which is just Policy one eighty-six, you'll see in blue. And it reads, "The public is invited to express their views on education-related decisions which have been made or policies which have been adopted by the School District of Amory Board of Education. Any district resident, district employee, or guests invited by the Board may make comments about any decision, policy, or board meeting agenda item. Such comments shall be made at the appropriate time, when recognized by the presiding Board member. The presiding Board member may limit the time for comments if necessary. Comments which are not about Board decisions, policies adopted by the Board, or are not about a board meeting agenda item are disallowed. Political speeches are strictly forbidden." Any comments, questions, thoughts that you want to chime in with on that item?
Would political speeches be specifically like asking for people to vote for some certain candidate?
That certainly could be political. A manner by which to amend that last sentence could be political speeches which are not materially related to decisions made by the Board, agenda items on a board meeting agenda, or decisions made by the Board, policies or decisions. You could change that last sentence to be that if you wanted to, because those are political. If someone had an issue with, for instance, we're talking about the COVID plan later, if somebody had comment about the COVID plan, that inherently could be political. But if it was about your decision specifically about what you did with masks or whatever it would be, remote instruction, that you would certainly want someone to be able to talk about.
Yeah, I think if we would include in there that, you know, limiting it to actions specifically taken by this Board.
Sure.
I think that would help clear up maybe any confusion there of what that is.
I like your amendment that you just stated.
Too broadly stated as presently exists.
Correct.
So, yep. So that's the policy, and then there is a exhibit that goes with it on the flip side. It is a lot of the same content as you just heard, and I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, other than to highlight the five items that you, six items that you see in the middle that are numbered one through six. First, for those wishing to speak before the Board, this hasn't changed. You simply need to sign up and list what you want to talk about. Second, community comments must pertain to a Board decision, policy, or board meeting agenda item. Third, the comment time is limited to five minutes. However, the time limit can be increased or decreased at the discretion of the presiding Board member. Fourth, that political speeches item that we could re-author. Fifth, personal criticisms of members of the Board of Education or employees of the Amory School District are strictly forbidden. And then lastly, this is a subtle change, but rather than ask for someone's address, we simply ask for their municipality. And basically, since the time I've been here, I don't know that folks typically give their address. Usually, it is their municipality, and it's really immaterial to us where exactly they live. Municipality is fine. So those are the items that you see in the exhibit, reflecting, obviously, the policy on the other side.
Yeah, I think that's important. I don't think that there's any reason to, for anyone to disclose their physical address. And typically, the Board's always been fine with having that just being municipality or a town. This policy is basically just shoring things up as we have more people being involved, which we welcome as a Board, and we've always welcomed as a Board. There has been schools who have completely closed off their community comments due to things being disrespectful or the fear of things being disrespectful, and that's really not a position that I feel like we've ever wanted to explore with this Board. So in regards to the reasons that this policy is happening, I think that's a good thing to keep open, to keep those lines of communication open. So with the changes, that'll be nice to see a second reading next month.
Yep. Yeah, and then number four, you're just going to try and add in that other.
Number four will match the last statement in one eighty-six.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll see it next month.
Okay.
And so we're just specifically kind of clarifying that we want to hear in community comments about things that are relating to what we're doing here.
Yes.
About things that relate to the things that are structured and how the teachers that we're discussing.
Yes.
Okay. With that, we'll move to our action items, the approval of the strategic plan.
Okay. Not going to run through the strategic plan again. It was an informational item last time. It is the guiding document for this district, guides us through two thousand and twenty-five. So it's a matter of taking action on said strategic plan, but if you have comments or questions, I'd be happy to take them. Other members of the administrative team helped create this, so at that point, they could certainly chime in too. So comments, questions, or a motion to approve? That's up to you.
Twenty-two thousand and twenty-five seems like a long way away when you say it, but it's really not.
Around the corner.
Doesn't seem far away at all.
Yeah.
So I'll make the motion to approve the strategic plan, Vision two thousand and twenty-five, as presented.
And the second.
Second.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried.
And I appreciate getting, you know, just all the action steps and stuff. I think I'd ask about that, because the overview kind of mentions that.
Sure.
Thank you for making that available.
If we had done all the action steps, I would have made for a very long presentation.
Yep. Next up, we will talk about new classes.
Okay. Josh, and maybe with the assistance of Jessica, but I have every bit of confidence, and Josh will be able to handle this. Jessica will be ready to save him.
Two new elective courses we're adding to the course catalog at the high school. The first one is called Multimedia and Computer Technology. The short version of this is, this is a course that's going to offer us just little snipshots about different parts of programs that are already existing. So our students, they're limited in the number of classes they can take, so if they're really interested in going into the computer tech area, you know, they can't take a class on Microsoft Word, they can't take IT Essentials, they can't fit all these classes into their schedule. This class gives them a week of learning how to build and repair computers, a week of learning Microsoft Office, a week of learning video production. It gives them just a little taste of all these different things, so they can kind of combine that into one. Obviously, it won't be the deepest dive as some of these courses that are full-term courses, but it really gives some of these kids an opportunity that normally wouldn't get to take multiple classes along these lines to get a flavor and a taste. And so we're pretty excited about that. Any questions about the multimedia class?
No, I think that's a great thing, is just, you know, to get, we're not here as a vocational education facility, so, but we are here to expose students to a variety of things that would help them narrow down.
Oh, I would sign up for this class in a second if I could go back into high school, just the different opportunities there. Web design, photographic editing software, video production, you know, one week at a time, that's a great opportunity.
Yeah, it's a really great class. Is there any prerequisites for getting into this class, and what grade levels is this?
It's going to be open for grades nine through twelve. I would imagine, after surveying the the students, you know, the first year usually takes a year or two for a course to really get popular with the kids, for the numbers to increase. I think the hope is that we'll have at least enough interest to run it one time next year, and then hopefully gathers a little bit of momentum after that.
Cool.
Okay, the economics course. This will be a junior and senior year elective, social studies elective. It's basically introduction to economics, looking at microeconomics, macroeconomics, laws of supply and demand. We have housed this within the business department previously, and there still is, will be touched upon a little bit there. But our social studies department felt pretty strong about putting something in that would adhere to the state's social studies standards a little bit better. This has always been something that we've always kind of looked at. We've tried to cover it within our US history and our world history curriculums, but it was a spot that we felt like we needed to strengthen and align more with the current state's standards.
Can I ask why? Like, what was the need that rose for, was it something that we saw on testing? Is it something that we've seen?
It really sprung out of PLC discussion in our social studies department, and in diving through all of the state's standards, basically noting areas of strengths, areas of weaknesses. This was targeted as an area where, let's make this a stronger area.
And that's based on the comprehension of students not understanding what?
Nope. It's based more on knowing what was in our curricular offerings to kids. Unfortunately, the social studies standards, like the forward test that our kids do very good on, in social studies, isn't part of the state report card. Even though we blew the state away in that, it doesn't count on the report card at all.
Yeah, it's certainly important. And this is junior, senior level?
Yes.
And this will be optional, obviously. And any prerequisite to get into this?
Well, once I've gone through the prerequisite courses of ninth grade world history and 10th grade US history, then they can take any path of social studies electives, civic psychology, sociology, now economics.
And so then I saw that in the, what we will be learning about synopsis of the politics and the impact that it has on economics, will there be a focus on government differing from the economic systems? And is that based on all countries, just America?
We're going to keep the different economic systems still housed within our world history curriculum in ninth grade. They actually have a unit in there that looks at the different systems that exist. This will be focused more on what's powering the stock market, the differences between micro and macroeconomics. That's where this class will be focused more.
So this will be geared more towards capitalism and politics as a democratic?
No, I wouldn't say so. This, we're trying to focus more on kids that are going to be potentially going down into a path in college, and helping them understand the differences between, like, how does supply and demand impact prices? Less with the political side of things, probably.
Okay. It just, it was on here. So I just, that's what I was wondering, if it was that, if that was more of a broad-reaching overview of the class, or if that was just a very small part of it?
Very small.
Okay. Because the two things don't always...
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So I will make a motion that we approve these two new classes.
All right. And Char, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried. You're still up here, Josh?
Yep. All right. So one of the, one of the, another benefit of the block scheduling is it does offer seniors the opportunity to get their required classes done by January. And we actually have one of the largest groups of students ever who have applied for early graduation requests. They were able to get, the biggest courses they have to get out of the way of their senior year are the required English courses and social studies courses. And we have a number of students who, for a variety of reasons, have decided that they really wanted to get to early graduation. They've met the threshold to do that, and so I would ask that you would approve the early graduation request.
How many students?
Eighteen.
Eighteen kids graduating?
Eighteen, eighteen students, yep. And I'm sure Sean could tell you the same thing. We've never had this many students who have...
I don't know if it's ever met past ten.
Yep. We will still have these students through the January counts, so we will have them, and they will come for our financial formula. So we'll have them until then, and then we keep contact with them. And they all have the option of going through graduation with us in May. Some have said they would prefer not to, and they just want to be done, and that's their choice.
I'm moved to approve the early graduation request.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried. There we go. Next up is a van purchase.
All righty. The district currently has two aging vans, high-mileage vans, both over a hundred thousand miles. And as you may know, in the last whole year, year and a half, it's been very difficult to come across vans, let alone purchase them. So Burns gave us the first option to purchase a couple of vans. They got in. You'll see the comparison to other locations. Obviously, we had to go quite a ways to Forest Lake to find even comparisons available. So this is just the opportunity to purchase two vans for our fleet that are needed, and we're here for approval for that.
Two? We need two?
Yes. And they'll be for the special education specifically, so we'll be also an aid based on those purchases as well, so.
And are we trading in?
Yes. Yes. We'll be trading in. We're not getting much for either of them, but getting some. So they're in pretty rough shape. I think one, we're only getting like 500 bucks for, and that's, yeah.
Used vehicles were in high man, you wasn't going to want money.
Yeah. Well, they're pretty worn. And the other one, I don't know, we're getting a couple thousand for the other ones. So it's not, it's not a great amount of a trade-in, but we are trading them in, so.
And would these prices still hold if we're not trading in?
For these, yes. They lock these in. We get special pricing based from the state for being a government agency, so they hold those for you, yes.
So obviously, we're at sixty-eight thousand.
Yep. And this is a budgeted expense. And if you missed the item that Andy mentioned, in that this is specifically for special ed, you get flow-through money from the federal government to be able to pay for a portion of that, so it's not sixty-eight out of district offers. It's much less than that.
And it is coming out of their budget, too. It's just, we budgeted so much per year for vehicles besides a bus, and so he's using the two, this to get the two vehicles, and so maybe another piece of equipment and one van, which we usually try to get one van. I'm trying to get on a schedule to rotate like we do the buses, and this will help us along our way to do that as well, so.
So if we're, so we're like looking at a saving, or recouping maybe, $2,500 in two used vehicles, that they still work, right?
Yes, but they're increasingly having issues, you know, mechanical issues and things that they have to send in for repairs and maintenance and things. But yes, they still were working.
What about selling them outright?
Yeah. I was going to say, could we sell them for more than 2,500 bucks?
Certainly, if you want to. We don't have to do this today.
Yep.
Well, I mean, we could approve the purchase with...
Yeah, you can approve the purchase, and then I guess we don't have to trade them in. We can try to sell them outright. Certainly. And another option is, I've seen is that there's also online auctions, the state site for online auctions that we do sell equipment through. That's certainly an option as well, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if that works, and I don't want to say.
Well, Ryan's been pretty aggressive in trying to get this done. Ryan Pease, that is, Transportation Director. If you gave him the charge to see what the difference would be between trading them in or selling them, he would certainly try and find that out for you.
Certainly. I think that would be, like, just a more fiscally responsible option if you're just talking 2,500.
Yep, and you can tonight approve the purchase of two, or you can wait until next month to approve the purchase.
And I can let you know exactly what we're getting for the trade-in. The exact numbers on that I can get you, so.
But if we approve the purchase, we don't have to decide on the trade-in versus auction at this point. Okay.
Yeah.
So that's up to you.
Well, I'm wondering, too, if our tech ed department would like one van.
I don't know. I haven't had that conversation.
See if they want one for training and schooling.
I don't know.
If it needs work, that's great.
Sure. I'll have a conversation with them and get back to you guys.
We'll chat with them tomorrow.
I think that we approve the purchase of the two vans for special ed, and that we look into what to do with the two used vans and see about selling them ourselves.
I'm assuming that the purchase of the van, that the recommendation was to buy from Bernard's, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think Bernard's has always been really good to us as a district, by the way, and to keep that business as local as we can, and, you know, semi-local there that benefits everybody. And so I would make a friendly amendment to Aaron's motion of purchasing two vans from Bernard's Chrysler Dodge Jeep and Ram.
Yes, I approve.
And I will say that, just to piggyback on that, that I know that they explicitly countered us when they got vans in. So that's, I like about them, too, is they knew we were waiting for vans, and as soon as they got them in, they gave us first chance to get them, so.
Okay. Well, I'd second that motion then.
Do you want to second it? Okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed.
And that's not with trade-ins, by the way. Hold on to them babies.
Okay. Looking for a van?
No.
Next up, we have staff device purchases.
Okay. What you see before you is an extension of what we've previously done, which is the student devices. So let me talk about that for a moment. We did Chromebooks at the elementary and intermediate school. Those devices have been in place and been used since the beginning of school. Those are devices which are fully paid for, and that was on schedule. Now, what we didn't know was that E-Rate, which is the federal government, would reimburse the district for the full cost of the elementary and intermediate devices, and that's exactly what we applied to have happen, and that's what is going to happen. I talked to Clint today, and he said likely here by the end of January, though timelines with federal government aren't always the most precise. So we, in essence, got a grand total of some 700 devices for free from the federal government. Now, the extension of that is, what are we going to do with the cost savings of that? So off-schedule is staff devices. They are five years old, and they are failing. I have one of those devices myself. It is here, and it is on, and is likely dead. And it's only been on for about two hours.
Mine is the same one.
So it's not likely to last very long. If I don't have it charged in, plugged in, it doesn't last long. So the bid is, that we asked for was from four vendors for 175 laptops, which would be for staff. The only bid that we received turned in was from Dell. So we tried to get others, but others did not weigh in. There are two options. You could lease them, and you'll see the price point there. If you lease it, over the course of three payments for three years, some 53,000. Or, and this is the option I would recommend, we go with the purchase of devices. And here's why I make that recommendation. Again, E-Rate, federal government, would allow us to purchase 175 Dells at 875 dollars apiece, and the government gives you, in essence, a rebate back of 400 dollars per device. So we are getting 175 devices at 475, and you see the impact on savings is some 70,000 dollars. So that would be my recommendation, in that there is a savings of 70,000. Andy, anything that you wanted to chime in on that?
No, you may ask some questions about, you know, obviously repairing devices that we have versus leasing. Fortunately with these, a lot of the things they could do in-house, and there are some that you send out. But this doesn't, from what I understand, I mean, maybe you know more than Sean or not, but I believe that it includes service on them as well, even with the savings, so.
Yes, I believe it does, based on my conversation with Clint. In addition, I asked him, when would they be set to arrive? And I thought he was going to tell me six months, and he said it'll be right after Christmas break. And I will believe that when I see it, but that's what he said. That's what he said.
That was the other thing I was going to say, is yeah, is it still up in there when we're going to receive them? But I talked to him, too, and he said that we would be getting them, so I'll hold them at that, so.
Do we own the current devices?
The current devices, the current staff devices, we do.
Okay.
But they're worth less than the vans we're trying to trade in, I can tell you that.
But we could continue to use ones that do work?
Sure.
Like in having a mobile lab or whatever.
Yeah, well, we could use these until...
Until we can't use them anymore.
Until we can't. I mean, they'll become obsolete. What we're getting is generally the same as this, if this is what you choose to do.
Now, the money from the Emergency Connectivity Fund, can you use that towards a lease? Or it has to be towards a...
Purchase only.
Purchase only. Okay. Yep.
Yeah, well, I mean, it only makes sense to purchase the devices.
Yeah.
And I don't, yeah, so I make a motion that we purchase the devices.
Yes, I would second that.
Motion made and seconded, to purchase those devices. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? There we go. And the next is donations.
Okay. We have a variety of donations, the first of which is a $1,000 donation to the Angel Fund from Our Saviors Lutheran Church. The second is a donation from Dan and Carol Smith, $500 to school nutrition program to help pay for student meals. The third is Apple River Knights of Columbus. Thank you for the following donations: 73 winter coats, 60 pairs of snow pants, 54 pairs of winter boots, countless hats, caps, mittens, gloves, and other winter gear. And I will say anecdotally, on behalf of Mr. Gould and myself, the high school kids still will not be wearing coats.
Yeah.
By choice. I'm not, I don't ever, I never understood it.
I'm still wearing shorts.
But whatever. We also thank the partners of the Knights of Columbus, who helped make the donations, these donations possible, Amory Women's Club, One Again Thrift Store, Amory Lions Club, area businesses, especially Walmart, and QuickTrip, and community members. And lastly, SMC, a donation of hats, gloves, snow pants for Lean Elementary School. And I think, one more, I missed.
Yep.
Lastly, Wisconsin, thank you for the donation of hats and gloves at Lean Elementary and Amory Intermediate, so everyone should have fully geared up. Now, whether they lose them or not is the question.
When you go to the third table in the intermediate building for the stuff, it's like, holy mackerel.
I was at the lost and found at the elementary this morning.
Yes. Looking for your kid's stuff, huh?
Correct.
Yes.
And I would assume that the $500 for the student meals will be being applied to when...
Yes, because right now, all meals are free based on the USDA.
Yes.
So we aren't charging anybody for anything, so there really isn't anything to offset. But when they start charging again, which would be next school year, then we would do that, yes.
Yep. Wonderful.
I'd make a motion that we accept these donations with a huge thank you to all parties involved.
I'd second that.
And Char, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And again, a big thank you. Wow. That's our community again. Yep.
And this has been like a monthly thing here almost for six months, maybe more, so very much appreciated.
Hey, Josh, you know, with that 3D printer, it's really cool. Could you get this Warriors emblem?
I'm sure they can do something.
It would be nice if we all had one here for sitting for our board meeting. I was just thinking about that. It'd be cool. You have an assignment?
All right.
Now, we'll just review our COVID-19 plan.
Okay. You've been seeing this for quite some time, so you're familiar with what it is. The first page, summer, the first page after the title slide summarizes the state of affairs for COVID this last week in the School District of Amory. It was our worst week ever. We had 30 cases. We had seven staff, and we had 23 students. Our high mark in the fall of 2020, before we went closed, was 26 cases over a two-week period. So by that math, if you extrapolated it out, we're probably going to be in the 40s, 50 out towards 60, unless things settle down. I don't know. We had four more cases today, so that puts us at 34 in a two-week window. You see the breakdown by staff, by students, by building, in the percentage of the entire staff and of the entire student body there in that graph. And then lastly, you'll see the matrix. We have green, we have orange, we have red. In order to have mass in question, you need to be at 21 cases in a building. We had 15 cases at the elementary last week, and we had some, pretty major sub shortages to go with it. We haven't gone anywhere near 40, but we had quite a few last week. A concerning trend is, this morning, we had 18 staff out. We were only able to cover nine of them. So we had nine areas, whether that be support staff or certified staff, that were not covered. It could be something as simple as a title person, but that's a kid or kids not receiving instruction that they desperately need. It could be a classroom teacher. It could be someone in IT. It could be a variety of different situations. When you have a person that's not here and no one to fill their spot, that's a problem. And we had nine of those this morning. So that's concern.
Yeah.
Well, we just heard about it. Well, we just heard about how important those title services are to be helping these kids.
Yes.
If we're not providing those title services day after day after day because of a staff shortage.
Right. I don't know where this goes. I have absolutely no idea. My crystal ball has been thrown away a long, long, long time ago. Our next determination date for where we stand is January seventh, Friday after the break. See where we sit at that point in time.
Yeah, I guess, you know, what's concerning is that not only we're talking about title services, but if you're just talking about even just regular instructors, if we don't have people to fill in a classroom, yes, we can always, we can, not always, but we have made do with pulling somebody out and putting them in a classroom, combining classrooms. But we've seen by looking at that scorecard, how important it is for not, not only to have kids here, but then to have kids that are here receiving quality education while they're here. And that's getting to be increasingly difficult. The load that's being put on teachers right now to run virtual classroom and a regular classroom is tough. But asking, we need people to keep your kids home when they're sick, to stay home when you're sick. I know we see kids that are, you know, coming to school, and it's not only just COVID, but there's, we know that when we have this kind of COVID rate in the district, that we have many more COVID cases that are being not tested, not reported, under-reported. And then not only just COVID, but also other sicknesses and illnesses as well that looks like that we're fighting through with seasonal stuff. So I think we have not ever made a snap decision as a board to just close school. I don't think that we want to do that now, but I think we should probably be prepared as a board to have another emergency meeting after Christmas to see and revisit, revisit this plan and our COVID numbers to see where they're at, at least for our staff. And I think we've long said as a board when we, when we came up with this plan, that if there's anything that took us out of school, it would be staff shortages. And we need to look at what that threshold looks like, if it's by building, building by building, staff in general. I'm not sure how that's, how that would look right at this point. Do you have any ideas with that?
Well, we have agreed to look at this by building. Right now, the biggest issue is at the elementary and intermediate, whereas at the beginning of the school year, the biggest issue is at the high school and the middle school. So it all depends on the timing within this whole situation. We have the ability to cover some internally, but not much more than we presently are without having huge compromises in the education we deliver. I don't know how to go about mitigating this, other than the ways we've already tried to mitigate it. But we are a school system that lies within a society, and it's one piece of a huge puzzle in regards to how a pandemic plays out. What we do at school is but seven or eight hours of one's twenty-four hour day. I don't know how to mitigate this just from a school perspective. I don't think it's realistic to think we can. So I don't have any answers. All I know is the picture looks bleak right now, and we're just gonna try and get through the next three school days, regroup. But I don't know what it's gonna look like after the break. We'll probably continue to have sub issues, and the thing that's going to sink us is not having enough people to do the job.
Yes, I guess that's kind of what I'm looking at, like, what is our average ti, I mean, and that's something that we're gonna have to gather some data on. What is our average time to see our educators are, that they're out? And how many subs that we need? How many subs days have we filled? How many do we have available? And is that broken out by building?
Well, we have less now than we ever did, because folks are simply not wanting the work, because they don't feel like they're safe in the work. Most of our subs are retired population, and that's what they've expressed to us. We have, we have more subs at the elementary and intermediate than we do anywhere, because most of our subs are very interested in working with younger kids, but there's not that many of them. And now we're getting into the hardest time with subs, because some of them are snowbirds, so they're all gonna go south, so we won't have them around. So it gets even harder on top of that.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess Char's asking, like, is there some kind of a number that, you know?
The numbers are what you see on the matrix. I don't have any different numbers.
No, I mean, like, as far as, you know, if there are eight staff out at the elementary school, or if there are.
Well, I think the point at which the numbers reach a critical mass is when you have to start combining classrooms. You'll have one teacher with forty kids. Or putting kids in a large group environment like this, I don't know that that would be very quality education.
Right.
I think that's the critical mass. I mean, if you're out three or four paras, that's gonna be a big hard shift for teachers, I can tell you that. But can we still have class with those eighteen kids? By all means. But those paras don't just serve purposes in classrooms. They're doing tons of other things, too, that now teachers or other staff have to do. It's getting to the point where it's becoming very unmanageable, and people are already tired, and it's December.
Yeah, and you know, we're looking at those windows, those assessment windows as far as numbers for what we do, moving to virtual education. I'm wondering if we need to tighten up those windows, because with staff shortages, those things move, those numbers move pretty rapidly for how long they're gone and how long they're back. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
The length of time that a student is gone or a staff person is gone?
A staff member.
Well, it certainly changes based on what the situation is. Some are back quicker than others. But that's all up to the county health department and us working with them as a nursing department. Some are back within five, six days. Some are still symptomatic on day fourteen. So it all depends on, and we've had.
They're out for non-COVID reasons also.
There are.
We do have other viruses and things.
Sure, they're in a household with six kids where they can't be here.
Right.
I mean, who knows what the situation is. Again, we are just one organization functioning within a society, and it would be impossible to say that we're the ones that are gonna fix it. Well, that's not realistic at all.
I don't know.
So it's up to you whether you want to make changes to anything here this evening. What I've heard you say is, let's regroup after the break and see where we stand. If that's what you want to do, certainly. You just take no action if that's the case?
We have a meeting on the fourth.
Yep, to meet on the referendum resolutions, yes.
Is that possible to add in on the agenda at this time than to revisit that as well?
That agenda hasn't been set nor published, so we could do that after. Wanted to look at the numbers if we wanted to. What we won't have is accurate numbers in-house, because people aren't gonna be reporting their numbers over Christmas break. Oh, we'll have our county numbers.
Right.
And again, I think there's a great question about county numbers as they relate to the district numbers. And what the matrix is, is district numbers. It probably makes more sense to wait until the twentieth, when we actually have a board meeting. Or the seventeenth, I should say, when we have a board meeting, rather than the fourth. Because then you'll have two weeks.
Discussion on the fourth about, about.
You can. Sure, you'll have two weeks of school after break before the seventeenth.
Yeah, I think if we had it on the agenda, just to talk about it as an informational item, just to talk about, yes, just to talk about how that could look, how we need to make a plan.
Sure.
And when we come back and reconvene as a, as a regular board meeting on the seventeenth, then we'll have more numbers. But if we have that informational meeting on the fourth, if something were to happen to like really go haywire, which we're not far from it, right after Christmas break, which I think is gonna be worse. But at least we've had that discussion to make a fairly educated decision on what we can do between there and the seventeenth.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, be up to the, at least for now, the elementary and the intermediate to find out, you know, what thresholds they have, you know, problems with staff.
Well, we meet tomorrow morning at nine AM, and it's the second item on the agenda.
Yeah, if the principals could put that together and identify critical areas and where your staffing is and where it has been, or where those critical marks would be to help us as a board make those decisions, that would be really fabulous. Maybe you don't know, but.
Multiple conversations, and we'll have another tomorrow, by all means.
And even what that would look like. Is that talking about closing school for the day last minute? Is that talking about closing school for several days?
No, I think you follow, I think you follow.
When we have critical tasks.
Yeah, you got.
I think you follow the matrix as long as you can.
Yep.
And if something goes off-script in regards to, we got seventeen teachers out in one building, then you're off-script. I mean, you can never predict that, but we wouldn't be able to have school.
That's why we're trying to kind of have a discussion of what would that look like? If staff sort of is what's gonna, what's gonna be the problem, what does that look like? And what would?
Top priority in my mind is to keep our kids here, no matter what. I mean, we're already in a no matter what. We have thirty cases in one week, and we were closed when we had twenty-six cases in two weeks. So to keep them here has been obviously a priority, and I don't think there should be much consideration about going remote at all. We need to keep them here, for everyone's sake, including our family's sake. But how do we do that? That's what we gotta figure out.
Right, I think that would be a great conversation to have on the fourth.
Okay.
How that looks, and if the building principals can put that together, how, I mean, it's gonna look different in every building, I would assume. So if you could have that discussion tomorrow morning and have something to us on the fourth, that at least we can roughline something.
Fair enough.
Yep, okay. Is there any change you want to make?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on.
I hate to add one more thing for you guys to think about right before Christmas and.
I think they were already thinking about it.
I know, I know. I'm sorry, but, yeah.
If they saw the agenda tomorrow, they were, right?
I think it was on their mind.
Yes.
On mine.
Okay, all right. With that, then, we will look at the personnel items.
Okay, we have new employee contracts for Rihanna Campion in school nutrition, Laura Fox in school nutrition, Lisa Gates, clubhouse assistant, Amber Glazer, van driver, James Kruger, van driver, Lydia Amara, clubhouse assistant, Erin Peterson, special ed para, Julia White, school nutrition, extra C contract, Olivia Peters, JV softball, Carrie Cullser, moving from special ed para at the elementary to a library media aide at the intermediate, and resignations for Kendall Bowermeister in library media, Lisa Gates in clubhouse, and Ann Monat in school nutrition. So you would need to make a motion, if you wanted to, approve these personnel action items.
Who makes that motion?
Aaron, and a second.
Second.
Dale, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. We've carried that, and there is no reason to go into closed unless.
Can I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
About the Essar application.
Yes.
The window was supposed to be open. I was just wondering about that.
It opened on the sixth, was it the sixth? Yeah, the sixth of December, and the answers are due and complete by March eleventh.
By March eleventh.
Yes, we have ninety days.
That was a, the whole process of discussing with the public and everything will happen.
January, February.
Okay. All right, then I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And Char, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.